Okay, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll please.
Mr. Whitworth.
President.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz is not with us here tonight. He's out of town, so we will move forward in our agenda here. So, we do have a quorum here tonight. We do need to make one modification tonight to add a proclamation to recognize FFA tonight, so we're going to modify our agenda right after our minutes. Once we approve those, we'll add our FFA proclamation to our agenda. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the one modification.
Motion to approve.
With the FFA. So we do have a second, oh, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we approve our agenda. So we do have our minutes from our last meeting that was held here on February the 8th, 2024. Is there any concerns or issues with those minutes before you? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. And then our FFA proclamation, this is by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, FFA Week 2024, whereas the future farmers of America, FFA organization and agricultural education provides a strong foundation for the youth of Walker County and the future food, fiber, and natural resources systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, career success among its members, as well as citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, cooperation, and whereas there are nearly a dozen active student and alumni FFA chapters in Walker County, and whereas agricultural education and FFA ensures a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas FFA's motto, learning to do, doing to learn, learning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education, and whereas agriculture remains a leading industry in Walker County with nearly 90,000 acres in farmland and a farm gate value for agricultural products of over $90 million. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate this as FFA Week in Walker County and encourage everyone to wear blue on Friday, February the 23rd to show FFA pride. Signed and sealed the 22nd day of February 2024, Chairman Shannon Whitfield. So we've got some of our FFA members here today. We'd like for y'all to come up and be recognized, and we'd like to get a photo, and your leadership can come up as well. And who's going to be the spokesperson?
They're looking around.
Do we need to flip a coin? Who's, does anybody wants to speak, or anybody's got any comments, anybody wants to say anything? Don't be shy, they're all friends and family around here.
But usually it's don't stop talking.
Yes, thank y'all for being here, and y'all are all from Rigsland, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, y'all are all seniors?
Juniors.
Juniors and sophomores, so y'all have the seniors at home, right?
There are actually no seniors.
Oh, so y'all are the real leaders then. Well, fantastic. Well, thank y'all for being here. Agriculture is super important in our community, and y'all already know that, so thank you for being FFA leaders in our community, and we're so proud of y'all and look forward to seeing what y'all are going to do in the future. Let's give them a hand. Come on over here, and let's all get a picture here together, and we'll look back there at the Kaia, the Scottwood, and she'll get a picture so if we can get this on our social media, share this with everybody. Very good, thank you. Appreciate y'all. Got another picture? Here we go. Very good, thank y'all for being here. And y'all are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go. It's not going to be a problem either way that y'all want to do that. I understand, that's what I figured.
That'd be my excuse too, guys.
No, we're just excited that y'all are here.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is our time of our meeting of our public comments. Anyone that would like to come up and speak to the board, and we do offer five minutes to anyone that would like to come up and speak. We encourage you to keep your comments focused on things in our county, but you can really speak about anything you want to speak about. Yes, sir, Mr. Pope, come up and please state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Jim Pope, and when I came tonight, I had a new question for Robert Stoltz, but he's not here tonight. So Mark, you'll have to fill in with this question here.
Well, I'll be more than happy to try.
Okay, and it pertains to the governing authority of this board here.
Yes, sir.
Uh huh. I went to the law books, specifically the Constitution of Georgia under the House Rule section, and the part where they give some one-sentence condensed version of what the law is, taken from cases. It has these two statements. One, power of county commissioners are strictly limited by law, and they can do nothing except under authority of law. A second point, county governing authority only has the power given to it by the legislature. Now, all governing officials, they have limitations. Like Joe Biden, he found out he's got limitations. Just last year, he got shot down by the Supreme Court nine to zero on an EPA case, and on a firm affection, he got overruled on the loan program for giving it, he got overruled, although I understand there's some other things going on right now about that. But where you get your authority is in this local enabling law. Uh huh, okay. Now, it has a clause in it.
Tell me what you're referring to so I can be on the same page with you.
Okay, I'm on page seven, and that's what I'm going to say right now.
Okay.
Itself as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in the board and reserved to the executive exclusive jurisdiction. Now, on a previous section, it had for the chairperson, the chairperson shall administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county and preside over the meeting of the board. Now, to me, that sounds like a mandate. He doesn't have any leeway on trying to get out of it.
You're right, it says he shall, he shall, so shall means he will.
Shall means he.
And will.
Yeah, he will.
Okay.
Now, what I would.
Don't worry about the time, we're going to finish this.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my question to you is, what is your interpretation of this exception clause? And I repeat again, itself as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested in the board and reserved to its exclusive jurisdiction. That's my question. What is your interpretation?
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Jim, and I'd say that my interpretation is pretty clear. My interpretation is what the Enabling Act actually states, and when you, when you just said the exception to otherwise provided in this act, the following powers vested in the board and preserved to its exclusive jurisdiction, then it goes on to say, the board, not the chairman, but the board, has the levy taxes, to make appropriations, to fix rate and charge for services, to authorize the incumbents of indebtedness, to order work done to be done excessive against benefit of property, fixed basis of such assessment, to authorize, provide for, execute contracts, to establish, alter, open, close, combine, build or repair roads, bridges, so, and I could continue on, I don't want to take up time.
It has 18 points, sir.
And they're very descriptive.
And I agree entirely, but I'm focusing in on this exception clause. Specifically, what would be your interpretation of that one exception clause?
Well, that's a good question. Let me look, let me just, let me see here a second then. Except as otherwise provided. Okay, it's very clear, it says except otherwise provided in this act.
Okay.
So I don't, it's not my interpretation, it's whatever exceptions are provided for in this document is what it's referring to. It's not my interpretation, or your interpretation, or Shannon's, or any of ours. And I think, and I'm going to refer to counsel too, just to, because I'm not an attorney, but when I read that, it clearly states exactly what you said, Mr. Jim, but then, and it says except as otherwise provided in this act, the following powers are vested to the board and reserved to the board exclusive jurisdiction. So, except as otherwise provided in this act, all that's, is there unless something tells us different, and that's what I, I see it as except what's provided in this act. Could you clarify the fourth statement?
Sometimes with all good intentions, any act or a local law can be interpreted in different manners, but my interpretation of it is, is that Section 11, where it's itemized 1 through 18, are the powers of the board. The board being the four people other than the chairperson. And the chairperson is involved if there is a tie, but he would only vote if there's a tie. And then, the duties of the chairperson are set forth in Section 10, and I agree with, I mean, you read it correctly, that the chairperson shall administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county and preside over the minutes, meetings of the board. So, that is, I don't mean to be too simplistic, but sometimes things can sound really complicated, so that's how I interpret that. There are powers that are delegated to the board in total, and there are separate powers that are delegated to the chairperson, whoever that chairperson may be.
One more reference, Mr. Jim, I'd like to make to you, just while we're talking about this on item 16, to exercise all the power and authority formerly vested by law in the commissioner of Walker County, together with the power and authority which may be delegated by law by the governing authority of the county, by whatever name designated. It's pretty clear that it specifies what the board is to do, and the board is the governing authority of the county by this document that we have. And like you said, we went down several, I can go over the rest of them if you'd like.
Well, now there are 18 points there.
Yeah, specific points that they drew out.
But would you think, suppose if you fired the chairperson and brought in a county manager to take his place, you think there would be a possibility the courts would overturn that and say, look, you got an exception clause there?
I don't believe so. I believe that the courts, if we chose to move to hire a county manager, we already know that the case law is already there, and that legislation has already given that authority to the board at home rule. We don't, we even, it's already there.
Okay, my time's up.
If we did, it would be legal, Mr. Jim, to tell you the facts, if that were the case, it's allowable by law.
I just asked for your interpretation. You gave it to me, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Stanley Matthews, Chickamauga, it's good to see you back, Mr. Pope. I told you that I wanted to say it publicly. The Enabling Act seems to be a good topic, the debate about it, and I'm in the same section. I was gonna, I was gonna, I don't want to, I don't have an exception in that, I'm not, I'm wanting to understand how we conduct this business under the powers of the chairman and the powers delegated to the board, because you're the chairman of the Walker County Water Authority, and you're also, I don't think you're the chairman of the Economic Development Authority, but you're a voting member of it. So with your powers listed as they are, what your expenditures are, because you're a representative of this board, when you're at those committees, how do y'all discuss the spending and expenditures of the water board, the water project, the, I don't, the last number I heard was 125 or 145 million total cost. The, on the Economic Development Authority, I think we spent 1.2 or 1.3 to acquire property adjacent to our current industrial site. How do y'all, do you have working sessions, do you meet, how does that process take place to where you're representing what the board wishes to spend money on and allocate money on in those situations?
Yes, great question, because both the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority also has a separate Enabling Act that was approved by the legislators.
Yes.
And so, anyone that is appointed to that board operates under those protocols of that board as well.
And that Enabling Act makes you chairman unless you choose not to be of the Water Authority.
Yes, sir.
And so, when you, as chairman of this, of the county, you're representative of the governing body of this county, is my understanding. So whenever you're representative in that situation, how do you determine how to spend funds underneath that committee? Do y'all have working, I don't know, do y'all have working sessions, are y'all informed by email?
Any and all work sessions would have to be done in public, and we traditionally have not practiced that, you know, like other counties will do that, where they'll have a work session, and they'll come up with a consent agenda, and then they just mass approve everything as a consent agenda. That's the way Dade County has chosen to operate is one example. But, the, just like there, the board of the Water and Sewer Authority, being the other four members outside of the chair, they vote on the expenditures of that, and the chair only votes if there's a tie or there needs to be a quorum. So the seven years that I've been there, serving as the chair, I think I have only voted twice, and that was because it wouldn't be, you know, to have, we'd have to have a quorum. So, the board over there takes and makes those.
The chairman sets the agenda for the meetings.
Well, the way that is working over there is the, I'm not the operation, the general manager typically is setting the agenda, and then they send the agenda out.
Do we still have an interim general manager over there?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay. So, but there's no discussion between the board and yourself as far as what goes on over there?
Well, there are some discussions from time to time, just like this board allocated $5 million of the ARPA funds for infrastructure projects, and that was on this agenda, and those expenditures were taking place.
So, and okay, the Economic Development Authority that you're a voting member of, you're not a chairman.
Yes.
How do you determine when money's involved, how to cast your vote? The, I don't know the process. How does that happen? So whenever we, whenever we purchased the additional acreage to add to the industrial park, 1.2, 1.3, somewhere in that neighborhood, how was the board's decision conveyed through you to cast your vote to do that? And I don't, I'm assuming you voted for it, but I don't know that.
Yeah, that was a unanimous vote that that board made, because that, in that land, that acreage that was for sale, it's about 100 acres, was adjoining, as you well know, to the existing industrial park, and we have some interested opportunities for industrial development, so it was a good fit.
I understand all that. How was the interest of the board represented on that committee through its representatives?
Well, just like anytime there is a bond issuance, just like there was through the last $15 million bond, we had to refinance, you know, there's several of those things that do flow through this board in that legal process. And so, the way the Enabling Act is set up, and those things that this board then comes to, and so this board can also convey property, so if they have, like we've talked about even with the Coats American property, this board can convey that property. So, the two entities are separated by separate Enabling Acts, but this board does have the ability to interact and work in concert with the development authority.
And I understand that with the Water Authority as chairman, but as a voting member on the Economic Development Authority, and you vote to spend more than $25,000, it seems to me that the interest of this board would have to be conveyed through your vote, and somehow either there would be a working session, or some, if, something that goes, it just appears to me by the Enabling Act.
The $25,000 Enabling Act would apply to the Enabling Act of this governing body. It wouldn't apply to the other Enabling documents, those other Enabling documents did take out the funds.
I disagree with you, Chairman. I think any, anytime that you represent the governing body of Walker County, wherever you're at, this Enabling Act applies to you. Not, you know, and we all know what my opinion is worth. It's worth my opinion.
We'll get our county attorney to look at that a little closer, that question. Have you got some addition you want to add to that?
I mean, first of all, they're two completely separate entities by law. Number two, whenever the, it's called the Walker County Development Authority, it's not the Economic Development, whatever you're referring to.
Yes, sir.
When they acquire property, there is no liability upon the county and the taxpayers and the citizens of Walker County for any action that is taken. Development authorities have been specifically authorized by law to encourage economic development, and they are given certain preferences or opportunities to acquire property, to then turn around and sell or lease that property, for example, at a, and help the buyer obtain some really good financing that.
Absolutely.
You and I probably couldn't get on the open market.
I agree.
But it's to encourage that type of development, because we're talking essentially about pretty big developments at this point.
Yes, sir.
So, if you were to look back, for example, when the Development Authority issues bonds, and they're frequently, you know, $30 million, tremendous amount of money, but every one of those documents has provisions that have been approved by the court and by our state law that says that Walker County has no financial responsibility if for some reason that whole transaction tanks. It's limited to the Development Authority. And I could see where that can be confusing sometimes, just like sometimes people get confused about the school board and district.
I'm not confused about that issue, I'm confused as an active, the reason that he's on that board is because he's chairman of this board.
That is true, it is possible that he could be elected, anybody can be voted on, so yes, it is provided that the chairperson, unless he declines it, is on there, but.
I'm just asking, as a voting member, it's, it appears to me as a voting member, not as chairman of the water company, but as a voting member of a committee like that, he's representing this board, of course, the way I read the Enabling Act, and I've got all the respect for you in the world.
Well, and it's mutual, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to sort of explain it to the best of my ability, and so, the fact that he sits as chairman of this entity in no way, when he goes to vote as a member of the Development Authority, brings into play the $25,000 requirement that is set forth in the county government Enabling Act. So, I know that was your position, and I'm not arguing, I'm just, you asked me, I'm just giving you my.
No, I'm unclear, because I get asked this a lot, and I'm thinking it makes no sense, because the only reason that you would be on the Economic, the Walker County Development Authority is because you sat in that chair, unless one of the cities, you were their representatives. And it just appears to me, in your position, to be on there as a voting member, not a chairman, that there would be something, some sort of reporting responsibility to this board, who you answer to.
Let me give you and everyone another example that's in state law across all 159 counties, health departments in the state of Georgia. The law says that whoever is the chair or the sole commissioner of the county authority, governing authority, is automatically the vice chairman of the health department, okay? They're the vice chairman automatically. This board, due to my recommendation, wanted to see also Robert Stoltz stay on that board. He had formerly been the representative of the city of Lafette, so with his experience on that board, and there were, one of the requirements is you have to have a physician or something of that nature, a nurse, a physician, or dentist, or something, to automatically be the chairperson. So when his term expired year before last, I asked this board to appoint Robert Stoltz as our representative from Walker County to be the chairperson of the health department. So there again, Robert's the chairperson, he only votes if there's a tie, but that's a separate entity, and it's a separate governing documents, and that is a quasi-agency that's both state and county funded, that's in our budget, where we give an allotment of funds. And so here you have, in that case, here's two of us that are on this board, that are on that board, but we don't come back to this board for approval of how we're going to vote on that board.
That's a similar example, and I would agree.
It's a very, very close example, and it actually brings more light to it.
Except, except, one of you is chairman, and one of you is a sitting member, and you've got restrictions, and he doesn't, and it just, I'm just explaining.
Well, my point was about bringing communication and asking this board for approval, that's not the way the state has these authorities and these other governing entities set up.
Make a statement, I'm going to make a statement to that, and just, just listening, and Shannon, you and I have had conversations about the Enabling Act of the Water Authority before, just in, over the past years. What I'm hearing, and I'm trying to understand, but I think, and I have an issue with this. So, yes, you are the chairman of the Water Authority Board. However, as a sole commissioner, things were a little different. Now that we have a board of commissioners, I do think that you are, it is, because you put yourself on there as the chairman, which was rightful by law, put, for a five-year term, which actually exceeds your term as chairman here, and that was rightful by law. But if you're dealing, if you're representing the governing body of the county, then I think there are situations, and I think if, well, we like, and you made the comment about the appropriation of funding for the water project, and we did discuss that, but I think, I think that what I'm seeing and hearing, and I've had questions asked to me very similar, is that we have a board now, and so things do change a little bit, and we have, and I have looked at, and still looking at, the Enabling Act for the Water Authority, because it was set up. still looking at the Enabling Act for the Water Authority, because it was set up with a sole, with a sole commissioner. That's when the Enabling Act went in, I've got copies of it as well. So it was set up with a sole commissioner. Well, when I look at, and just, just Mr. Pope, just when we were just talking about that, and I go back to just, just this, number sixteen on the, this designated to the board as, as a function, it says to exercise all the power and authority formerly vested by law in the commissioner of Walker County, together with the power and authority which may be delegated by law to the governing authority of the county by whatever name designated. But it says to exercise all of the power and authority formerly vested. I don't think that that means that, to take all the power, but I think that what that's telling us is that it's a share, it's, it, the information needs to be shared, and that it is a board that will be making decisions when it's a voting time.
That's right.
So to keep the board, to keep them in that loop, or to have work sessions would probably be a good idea. You know, to kind of keep everybody on that same, because before you didn't need work sessions, you, there was one person in charge, and that was the sole commissioner. Now there's five people on the board and four that do the voting, and so we need work sessions to know what's going on.
Sure, and that can be done.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
And I, I, I think that's a good point that's made.
By the time, we'll be happy to.
Oh, we'll, yeah, we'll make the time for it, we'll make the time for it, we, we're gonna be doing several work sessions. But I just think that that will help clear up a lot of the.
Yeah, I just, I, I understand the distinction that, as, as a chairman and a voting member, it's, it's whenever you're a, a voting member, exactly what Mark was referring to, it just appears to me that you've got a responsibility to the board, which has a responsibility to the taxpayers and the citizens, because at the end of the day, if you're a, a water recipient, you're probably a taxpayer. You could be a renter, that's fine. But it, 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 it's one of those things with me for the three years that we've, we've been in this transition, that's been unclear. And it, it's, it's one of those things bothers me, is I'm like, you know, how does, how do you go, I mean, this, this is like the largest project in Walker County history that you're undertaking at the Water Authority. And I understand you got public meetings and, and you want to come, come. But at the same time, I mean, when you're talking, I, I don't, I'll just say a hundred to a hundred and forty-five million total cost, I don't know. That's the latest numbers I've heard. But that's a huge responsibility on the taxpayers, and most folks have no clue. I'm not saying anything's hidden, I'm not acute, I'm not, it's not what I'm saying. It seems like to me, though, that you have a responsibility as chairman to have the input of the board, because sooner or later, I suspicion, once the project gets rolling and we figure out how we're going to finance it, there's probably going to be more folks concerned about it than the ones standing here today. That's, but, but thank you for the input.
Okay, anyone else?
Sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
Stanley always gives me these things to think about and ask too.
Please state your name.
Jamie Holsick. So the Water Authority has its own budget.
Yes.
Right, and from the water bills, and Development Authority's funded nother grants and things like that, but where does its monetary budget come from to, say, purchase land?
The, the Development Authority can make an eighth of a point off of a bond issuance. So as an example, when Roper did their expansion, multimillion dollar project, they wanted to use the Development Authority as a vehicle to issue multiple million dollars of bonds for their equipment.
Right.
So in the state of Georgia, you can issue bonds that even the Development Authority doesn't have any recourse or any liability risk.
To assist in the promotion of expansion.
But they can get these tax-free bonds, and so when they make a, an eighth of a point off of that, you know, I, you remember what that bond issuance was back, was it about a hundred and forty thousand dollars or something like that? They came back to the Development Authority as a revenue stream.
Right.
Any pilot agreements that are put in place, payment in lieu of, of taxes are put in place, those can flow back through the Development Authority. So on the project with Roper, for the first time that we can find in the history of the county, we made the decision at the Development Authority to take that pilot payment and redispers those funds based off of a pro-rata share, based off of the millage rate, back to the school system, the city of Lafette, and Walker County government.
Okay, I get all that from the Development Authority.
Back through that. So there's different mechanisms like that, that the Development Authority generates revenue.
Been on Development Authorities, but along with that, like when you see in the paper, Walker County purchases more land on, in Rock Springs.
Right, so in that example, that million dollar plus purchase, the Development Authority had the cash on hand in reserves, and the Development Authority voted to make that cash transaction.
Okay, they had cash on hand, and that cash came from where?
Come from a, a building over time of pilot payments and bond issuance, uh, so it's not.
Not taxpayer.
Not taxpayer dollars, no, sir.
So, so all the Water Authority, uh, uh, board is appointed, right? So not elected, Development Authority is, it's appointed as well?
It is.
Okay, so with that being said, you know, when somebody comes up to, y'all are our elected official, right? So if I had a question about a water bill, or Development Authority, or somebody asking a crazy question about why is Walker County buying so much, uh, land when the industrial park's not even full at audio? You know, you'd think your elected officials, with its consistence in the districts, uh, y'all would be able to answer that question, right? And I believe in working sessions, I believe in knowledge, knowledge is only good because there's still a relationship, whatever you do. But, um.
One thing, you brought up a good point about select water bills, and I won't bring this up tonight, a lot of people don't realize this. But in Walker County, there's nine different entities that are providing water service
Yeah.
into Walker County. So sometimes people think if they have a water issue or a supply problem with, you know, the water's not working, or a bill problem, that it's Walker County. But there could be, it could be Walker County, or it could be eight other entities that are providing water into the county.
Right, right. But again, those are appointed and, um, you know, who knows who they are and things like that. But again, they're not out in the public, say, let's call so-and-so on the Water Authority, you know, be calling Brian in District Three and, you know, whoever to talk about the water. Because again, you're representing the county and having those working sessions and knowledge, and maybe even input, I would suspect, because I don't think you know everything, and then I have ideas and ideas from all that you may be coming to these meetings, say, well, I think I might have a little different thought about something than the other, so I, I'm all for that, and working sessions, more knowledge, more, um, strategic plans, so thank you.
Thank you, very good. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come up, please. Please state your name, sir.
Gary Williams. Y'all are fixing to pass this Resolution R zero zero eight dash twenty-four, paving of roads.
Yes, sir.
One of the roads in High Point is Gillie Lane.
Yes, sir.
Point one eight. Is there any plans to extend that road beyond where the pavement ends extended in any shape, form, or fashion?
Not that I have an awareness of, and what we're trying to do, once, now that the T-splash has passed, we're trying to, some of these shorter, smaller roads, we're trying to pave when we're in that, in a, in an area where we kind of bundle it together so we don't have such a higher deployment cost. And so that's why these are being bundled together based off of the radius of where they are.
Is there any plans in widening that Gillie Lane?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So the, who, uh, recommended that road to be resurfaced or paved?
Our superintendent over our roads, Carlin Bowers.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, yes, ma'am, please come up.
I'm totally inclined to seat in my pants tonight.
Okay, before you start, please state your name, please.
Oh, Joan Womack.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
The reason I'm here basically is because of the road paving. Because in looking, and I drove down these roads on my way over here tonight, Carlock Circle, Gillie Lane, and Herman Buck are basically driveways. There's, they don't go anywhere, there's no through traffic on them, they're just there. There's, might be a dozen houses there in total. And I guess it concerns me why those roads, because it looks like there would be a lot more, more used roads that would be.
It's a great, it's a great question, and so our goal is, is over the next ten years, is to get every road paved in Walker County, we've got about five hundred more miles to go roughly. And so we're paving, if you look there, a road that does get used a lot is Garrett's Chapel and Marble Top.
Absolutely.
So those roads are off of those roads, that's what's driving paving those, is because if we pass them up and we come back years later, the cost of the deployment of the equipment by the vendor is going to be so much more expensive than it would be just to go ahead and pave that eight tenths of a mile, or that two, or point two six, point two six tenths of a mile, you know, to do that. So we have a lot of very narrow roads in our county, we have a lot of dead-end roads just like these, and our goal is, is to get them all paved if they're county roads. And so the easiest way a person can kind of get a snapshot if it's a county road or not, if it has a blue sign as the sign marker for the road name, that means it's absolutely a private road. Ninety-nine percent of the time, if it has a green sign with the white lettering on it, that is a county road. And over the years and previous administrations, when a lot of the roads were dirt and gravel, different commissioners over decades have accepted different roads, even though they may look narrow and look like basically a driveway with, you know, a, a limited number of houses on them, like you described. It's very true, they accepted those as county roads, and so therefore, we're responsible going forward to maintain those as county roads.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought is, is there some kind of a plan in the works that they would want to pave those roads? And I'm, um, in looking at this, which I just saw tonight.
Sure.
Over here on the single-family new home construction.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed in two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, there were three hundred and fifty-two. Now, I don't know that those houses were built, or if that's just.
Permits. Those are permits pulled, no, typically it takes somebody then nine months to fifteen months to get it built.
Right.
But those are permits.
There's three fifty-two, that's more than double what twenty-two and twenty-one together. And that scares me. Because to me, the beauty of Walker County is the rural setting, the, it's peaceful, it's calm. People are not helter-skelter like Fort O, which I'm in Fort O every day. I go over there and pick up my grandkids, so, you know, but you come back to Walker County, it's beautiful, and it's peaceful, and it's calm. And we just went through this ordeal with that oil station down there, and they're wanting to build houses, build and build and build and build, and over on Happy Valley, and they're building all those houses that are this far apart from each other. And that just really concerns me because I, um, I just think we're forgetting what Walker County's all about.
Well, I think you bring up a great example of why it's very important for communities to have zoning. And very fortunate here in Walker County that we do have zoning, we have some surrounding counties that attach us that don't have any zoning, and so it, anything kind of goes. So zoning can help protect, also the comprehensive plan, which was used to talk a lot on the situation you're speaking of, is where you, every five years, you review that comprehensive plan, and the citizenry in collaboration with the local government can have that conversation of future land use and put that into the comprehensive plan to talk about the areas that need to be protected for the green space. What areas do we want to see grow and develop? Where, where's the infrastructure to grow and develop? And, and you know, mentioned Happy Valley Road, one reason that that was an easier development for developers to do is because it had all of the elements of utilities, including sewer and fiber, which are, the sewer is usually the big lynchpin in a lot of rural communities. And so, you know, determining where communities put future sewers will dictate a lot where the future growth will be. And so one way to, to be able to manage that growth in areas you want to keep as green space is don't ever put sewer in those areas. And so that way, you make that part of your comprehensive plan, that we're going to keep those agricultural or forest lands, and we don't want to see that development. And so that's a, a tool that is used as a good resource to manage growth.
Well, I think, I guess my concern is, I think the people of Walker County, I don't know of anybody that likes what went on on Happy Valley, those homes over there, they're just too close together. When you can hold hands and stick your hand out the door and hold hands with the people next door, that's not Walker County to me. And I don't think anybody in Walker County likes that. We want the open spaces and the rural, and that's what makes Walker County what it is, that's the reason it's, that everybody loves it. And I just want to make sure that the people of Walker County are heard when these things start happening, and they're applying for all these building permits and like over there. It just, I mean, to me, the people are who counts. And I don't like the fact that someone might step in it, or y'all, and I'm not criticizing y'all, I'm just saying, come in and say, well, we need this, so we're gonna, you know, build, and taxes going up, because I'll say, every time these new homes come in, our taxes go up. We've been through that this year.
Well, this board has not raised taxes.
Well.
This board has consistently rolled back taxes. What has raised taxes has been the school board, and we don't have any governing authority over their taxing authority.
Well, I'm not pointing at y'all with that alone, but I'm just saying, it really doesn't matter to me who raises them, when they get raised, it's coming out of my pocket. So, you know, I'm, it, that's immaterial to, you know, why or who's raising them. But they're going up, and they went up dramatically this year. So I just, I just want to express my view that I think the people of Walker County need to be heard.
Yes, thank you for coming to speak and, and be with us. Yes, anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward here on our agenda. And, um, our new business resolution R dash zero zero eight dash twenty-four, a resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to approve a list of roads for resurfacing in two thousand twenty-four, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas Section eleven, Item seven of the Enabling Act grants the board the authority to repair public roads and bridges, and whereas the board has the need for several roads to be resurfaced or paved, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the two thousand twenty-four roads resurfacing list attached heretofu marked Exhibit A is hereby approved. Be it further resolved that the board directs the county procurement staff to move forward with a request for proposals for the roads on the two thousand twenty-four list by May first, so resolved the twenty-second day of February two thousand twenty-four. So once the board takes action on this, it mentions there the procurement site, the state has a site that is set up that all road projects are to be listed where they are published out statewide, and any contractor across the state that wants to be notified, the state sends them an email and notifies them that there's an RFP or an RFQ being requested for proposals. And so they can, you know, make their proposal and, and follow the RFP guidelines and turn in their sealed bid. We typically are getting four to five proposals back every time, which makes it a very competitive situation. So it's a, it's a good system, I think it has to be posted for thirty days. Once those bids come back, we'll open up those bids, we'll put those on the agenda, and then this board will award the contract, if it's their desire to award the contract at that time, to who will fulfill, uh, the paving of these roads in two thousand twenty-four. Any questions?
Should be around the first meeting of April?
That would be our goal, yes. For some reason there's a hiccup or we have some.
You said May, you meant.
Obviously, yeah, it should be March, yeah, so this was here, yeah, let me read that last, it said, be it further resolved that the board directs the county procurement staff to move forward with a request for proposal for roads on the two thousand twenty-four list by March one. So that means getting it posted on the procurement site by March one. So this should get posted tomorrow.
Yeah, and so we should see it the first, first April then, okay, first meeting.
Yeah, so pretty much all of March will be that process time, and then we should be, be getting it on the first meeting in April for this board to approve, so we can get on the front end of the paving season.
Very good.
Good question, sorry about that misspeak there on March, I said May. Sorry about that misspeak there on March, I said May. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, hearing none of the board, do we have a motion to approve the road paving list then to be placed on the procurement site?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner, ask you any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the list is approved and move this process forward. Okay, I'm going to ask Payne Gilli if he'll make his way forward. We have a consideration of a rental agreement with a purchase option from Yancey Brothers for a D4 track type tractor for the Walker County landfill. So Mr. Payne Gilli, would you like to give the board folks tonight an overview of that?
Good evening, everybody. Yes, the purpose of, of this agreement is to obtain a D4 sized, uh, track dozer for the landfill. We currently have a large size, uh, it's an 850K John Deere. Uh, and it's, it's very large to move around the site. We're 150 acres. And to move that size piece of equipment from one end to the other is quite time consuming. And it's, uh, tears up our landfill surface, it tears up our, it impacts our asphalt paving. And this smaller piece of equipment will allow us to move around a little bit better than, than the bigger one. We also have quite a bit of slope work to do on Site 2, our construction and demolition site. We have to, um, we have to, uh, start that as part of our erosion control plan. And this will help us get on those slopes, those 30 degree slopes a lot better than the larger piece of equipment. And also, we can use this piece of equipment for our roads and our brush pile. And, uh, there, it comes with, um, a sort of a forestry package, not quite the full forestry package, but it will, it has protective pieces on it that'll help us with our brush pile. It also comes with a ripper, uh, that will allow us to do road work and also some site grading. And we, we started looking at this back in May. I contacted, uh, Yancey Brothers. They have a, they have a rental program that allows us to do this. A lot of folks out there that supply dozers don't have a rental program. And this rental program will allow us to try it out, to see how it works for us. And, you know, to make sure it's a piece of equipment that at the end of the rental agreement, if we're seeing that we're using it a lot and it's useful for the landfill and it's, uh, it's a good buy for us, then we can move in that direction. If it's something that we don't necessarily need, we only need for one project, well, then we can turn it back into them. No harm, no foul.
Question.
Sir.
Uh, you, you mentioned the, uh, maintenance on the slopes.
Yeah.
Uh, and you said that's part of, and I, I know that to be part of our erosion control, but have, have we had a review that we need to be, is that part of what spurred that we, we need to be working on those?
Yes.
And then, and I think in the conversation that you and I had had, and I just want to bring this out so that the people understand, I think the, the cost, what we're looking at renting this for is substantially less than what it would cost us to hire someone in just to stabilize our slopes.
Yes, we did, I did send out a, a cost estimate request to several contractors in the area. And those prices ranged, um, off the top of my head, anywhere from around $200,000 to, um, about, uh, probably $700,000. So, um, when you look at those costs, um, and this is something we would need to maintain even after they are gone, after they come in and do the initial work, um, it would be cost effective for us to implement the program ourselves and do it ourselves. And this piece of equipment will help. And this is under EPD's direction.
Right.
Legitatory driven.
Right.
Okay, thank you for that. Also, Brian Harts had a lot of involvement in this project and has a lot of prior experience in landfill operations. So Brian, would you like to speak as well?
No, it's a good point. We've got to get those slopes fixed out there and Payne to get some pricing. And Payne's assured us that he can fix those if we get him this dozer, so.
It could be a worthy effort for us to, to take that.
I think so, yes.
The numbers are.
And if we're going to rent it for six months and then look at purchasing it maybe, right?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
I think, I think it's a good approach to see, like Payne said, how much, how much are we going to use this tractor once we get it? And, you know, so, yeah, I think it's a good approach. And I think it'd be a good machine to use there too.
And this, uh, portion of the rental is actually applied to purchase price. So the price of the machine comes down as we, as we rent. And, um, I want to say, I want to mention Dave Gottlieb. Dave Gottlieb has been working with me on this, this agreement with the Caterpillar attorneys. And, uh, he reads a boilerplate about it like nobody else can, I'll tell you. And, uh, I meant to say last week that you, you did the same thing with ACC and I appreciate that, we appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do want to, just to avoid any confusion at all, we, uh, published our agenda. We provided a copy of the rental agreement option at that time. Since that time, we have made some provisions that are favorable to the county's position. And honestly, those were completed until about 5:30 this afternoon. So the board has in front of it, um, what, uh, provisions were. And the only really substantive provision, uh, if you picked up a copy of the agenda with the under that paragraph four, uh, how it was originally framed. And it's very difficult to get, um, large vendors like this to, uh, back off or change, um, their terms. And, and then you can't really see this from a distance, but if you look in your agenda package, where you talk about fine print, um, this, this sort of this, uh, fine example of that. But basically, that provision provided that they had the, um, right to adjust their price, um, up if market conditions indicated that. And I said, no, we aren't going to do that. You know, we're going to pay what we repay. Furthermore, this piece of equipment happens to already be on the ground, meaning it's at Yancey's facility. And so there, there is no time for this change. We, we anticipate having this delivered to us within approximately two weeks. And, uh, they are going to put on some attachments, uh, which we, they were originally, and I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, they weren't originally listed on Page 1, but they, they are now, to avoid any confusion on that. And for those folks who deal with bulldozers, you know, the attachment for bulldozers, such as, uh, rippers and screens and sweeps can be really expensive. So we didn't want any issues. So that's why we had them strike that provision and add in black and white what attachments we were buying for the purchase price. And then the last item was, in their contracts, they have a, what's the term called, FOB, which means freight on board. And if it says freight on board, for example, Yancey facility, that means that Yancey facility, to give it to your landfill, you pay for it. You, the purchaser, you Walker County citizens. And I said, no, our understanding was it was going to be FOB landfill sites. So they are delivering that. It sounds like a minor thing, but when you get into, and I know that Commissioner Blake Moore can definitely testify to this, the cost of hauling, um, a D4 bulldozer is pretty expensive, uh, from the south end of Atlanta to here. So that saved us some additional money. And, um, it also changes who's responsible if something happens in transit. They own it until it hits our yard, not, it's at their yards and getting wrecked in, in Atlanta. Those are the only changes. We just, you know, I wanted to be very transparent that there were these changes that were made. And, um, they were all favorable to the county's position.
Thank you, good overview.
Thanks, sir.
Payne, to echo something that you made a comment on a while ago, is our attorney, David Gottlieb, is, is really good at contract reviews and negotiations. And these companies don't put this stuff in small print by just chance. They put it in small print hoping you don't read it. And, you know, so David gets in there and blows this up on a computer and he goes through this with a fine tooth comb. And, and he has demonstrated very favorably for this county, uh, over the years of getting these companies to modify these agreements because he finds their, their loopholes and their outs.
Yes.
And he really tightens these things up. So David, thank you for the work you've done on this. And I know it's very tedious work and it's very important work. So, uh, just wanted to echo your comments on that.
Sure.
Anything additional or any other board member have a question? Okay, so hearing none, we have a motion to approve, uh, this contract rental agreement with Yancey Brothers for this D4.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner, ask you, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that agreement is approved. Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you, Payne.
Looking forward to some good looking slopes out there in about a month. Stay on.
In two weeks, if the weather's good. Okay, uh, our department's statistical data report, uh, won't read all this, but we'll point out to you a couple of new things that Joe's added per my request, just to give everybody a better snapshot. But if you look there, uh, on the fire department, the last section there, we've added the Siren GPS subscriptions. You know, we have been putting a lot of emphasis and focus on getting our citizens signed up on this emergency notification system by text, email, or phone. And so we did a good campaign in January and also the Wild Game Dinner. There was a lot of emphasis in and around emergency notification and, uh, weather alerts and, and all. And so we added 555 new subscribers in January. So I asked Joe the question, I said, well, that's great, but how many do we have total? Because we're running out of paper over here. So if you look to the far left corner there, says Siren GPS subscribers. We now have 6,048 subscribers total. So when you put that in perspective, there's, you know, roughly 70,000 people in this community. And I would say with that, even including kids, there's probably 55 or 60,000 cell phones in this community. So we've still got a lot of work to do to, uh, to bring people's attention to this because 6,000 sounds like a big number and to a degree it is. But when you've got 70,000 residents, it's an extremely low number. So we're going to continue to keep up with that number, continue to talk about our Siren GPS notifications. Also, same thing too, we, we had a good month of adding Facebook followers, which shows there's good information being put onto the Facebook and people want to follow and keep up. So that gives us a grand total of 17,712 total followers. Uh, likewise, you know, you see there, um, under our newsletter subscribers, in December, we showed a negative five. And what drives that is if someone opts out. You know, we use, um, you know, a, a database through, um, MailChimp, I believe it is. And so, you know, people can opt out. That's one of the regulatory things that you've got to be able to opt out of those type of things. And so we had more people opt out in December than opted in. But in January, we have 23 new subscribers to that. So we've got a total of 6,147 subscribers to our newsletter. Also, you see that Transit still has, you know, good, strong numbers of 2024. And I think if you still, if you, if we continue to still see pricing pressure at the gas pumps and gas prices stay up, you'll see those numbers go up even more. Okay, there's more information there that y'all can review as well. Also, we'll go to our commissioners' comments. So Commissioner Blake Moore, you're next.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in here. Appreciate all of our workers and every department and all the hard work you do. If I can help, call, text, email, thank you.
What's your ask?
Thank you for your participation. Thank you, Carlin, for the hard work on the paving list. I know that's kind of a tough, tough to kind of discern where we need to be, but I think you did a great job on it, all departments. Appreciate all, everybody's work. Thank y'all for your participation. And again, it helps us to better know what you're thinking and what you want us to do. So thank y'all, look forward to seeing you next time.
Commissioner.
Yeah, so thank you, Carlin. You know, the way I know T-Splosh works is that when I first got elected, I put a sticky, every time somebody called about a road, I put a sticky note on my office wall. But they're starting to come off the wall now. So, they are, they're starting to come down. So Carlin worked with me every year and put this together. He actually got some roads added that he and I talked about that got left off. So, yeah, thanks. And thanks for your, for T-Splosh. And those of you that didn't, you're going to benefit from it anyway because it's, it's a great program for our county. And also thanks to Chief Hod, who's not here tonight, but he's been working with some, uh, what is it called when you agree with other counties to cross lines?
Automatic aid.
Automatic aid. Yeah, so he's been working with Chautauqua County on that, that it's a bling in the area. And also with the seat of the Fed, he thinks he got both of those about finalized. So that's a great step.
And to add to that, Brian, they're working up so in the triad, some of the areas as well, yes.
Yes.
We have, uh, we have mutual aid, we're working on the automatic aid.
Right, I knew there was a difference, I didn't want to say the wrong one, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. And for those of you that may not understand all of that, what we're speaking of, uh, mutual aid is an agreement that fire departments will have, an intergovernmental agreement, where if there's a large structure fire, they need more resources, more personnel, they can reach out for, for aid. And it's, it's kind of optional because it's a mutual aid, but it's optional that those departments can determine if they want to go or not go. When you have an automatic aid agreement, you set up a, usually about a five mile or 10 mile radius that benefits both jurisdictions. And so we did this, it was one example, over in Villanowell Community several years ago with Whitfield County. Uh, they've got a fire station fairly close to the county line, so do we. And so we put in that radius and you agree on those radiuses with both government entities. And you list those roads. And so when you load that into the CAD system at the 911 system, anytime there is a, an emergency structure fire, and this is what we're talking about, it's just structure fires primarily, then both departments are automatically dispatched and those calls are handled as if it was directly in their jurisdiction. Because the intergovernmental agreement makes that a jurisdiction of automatic agreement, so you respond. But it is reciprocal, so it, uh, it benefits both communities. And when we have such a, a great, large rural community, when you have some fires in some of these, you know, outlining areas, you need all the resources and water that you can get there. So the more automatic aids that a community can put together, it better services the citizens and provides a higher level of protection on structure fires. Because it's not an if or maybe, will they come? It is a yes, they're going because the governments have agreed to do so. Uh, also, I want to speak just briefly too on the, on the road paving. I echo some of what Brian said, you know, it's great that the citizens and y'all have approved the T-Splosh because we're going to be able to get a lot done in this community. We have a lot of roads that have been 35, 40 plus years that haven't been paved. But also, every year when we do a paving list, it is kind of bittersweet. Because those that's getting the road paved are happy. Those that roads didn't make the cut that year are disappointed. Especially when we put this on Facebook, we get a lot of negative comments because, well, why did my road not get paved? It's not an exact science. There's a lot that goes into this that Carlin puts in in communicating also with our surrounding communities. Because we don't want to pave up to a county line or to the city limits. We want to collaborate with those neighboring communities if that road crosses that line. So we pave jointly so we don't have the new fresh paved road and our neighbors have the old beat up road and they start getting a lot of complaints about it. Also, a lot of what drives this is utility work and repairs. So if we know there's future water or sewer line replacements or other type of utilities that's going to be into those right of ways, we hold off. Or if we know there's a large development, uh, we know there's a subdivision being built, there's going to be a lot of concrete trucks and different things. We will put that off until that's more developed out because we know there's possibly going to be road damage. So there's a lot that goes in behind the scenes to pull that together. It's not just pulling these out of the, out of the air. But also, Carlin has already started working on the next two years. So he's already got roads on his list that he'll be recommending to this board for what we want to pave in 2025 and 26. So it's, it's an ongoing process. And again, our goal is to get it all done in 10 years or faster. So, you know, everybody's road will eventually get paved that hasn't been paved in the last seven years. But it is a process. And there were some roads that we had on there early on. One road in particular that I requested to be on there because it's in real, real bad shape. in particular that I requested to be on there because it's in real, real bad shape, but the water line under that road needs to be replaced and that's with a neighboring jurisdiction water system that comes over into Walker County and they're one of those nine suppliers that I mentioned. And they, we need them to replace that water line because that's what's made the roads so bad, is all the water main breaks has tore the road up. So we don't want to put fresh asphalt down, we're still gonna have those main breaks. And so we're gonna work with them over this next year if need be to assist them, as we've discussed, Commissioner Askew and I have discussed, if we need to assist them in, in helping get those water mains replaced so we can get those roads paved. Okay, I don't think we have any need for an executive session, do we? Okay, all right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven forty-two. Thank y'all all for coming.